Thank you. I call this regular meeting of the Lee County Board of Supervisors, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three to order. And then, first thing on the agenda is public hearing. Note hereby given that the Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at five thirty P. M. in General District Court Room in the Lee County Courthouse, Johnsville, Virginia. The purpose of the public hearing will be to receive public comment on the proposed abandonment of a right-of-way granted and described in a deed dated November the eighth, nineteen sixty-nine, recorded in deed book two twenty. Page and located in the White Soul Show Magisterial District of Lee County, Virginia, as the abandonment is approved, titles of the right-of-way were revert to the adjacent property owners. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of that?
Mr. Chairman, just make a statement here, this in Mr. Smith's district. There were about four or five property owners that gave a right-of-way, a potential right-of-way, gave it for free, donated the property to the county in the event, or in the hope that a safe road would be built and extended on through there, tying into another secondary road further on down in there. It's been fifty years. The road was extended up to the point where this right-of-way was granted, but there's been no movement in fifty years and nothing even mentioned that I'm aware of in the last thirty years to ever extend that road on. There's no real need. Some of the other secondary roads have been pushed on through and serves all the communities that are there. And the property owners are just asking that, this basically just split sort of down through the middle of the fields and things, and they just, they thought, you know, since the roads never coming through there, they would just like to have that right-of-way back so that their property can be made whole again.
Right. No one has any name to say, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion. If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, let's go ahead, just for the record, make a statement that we do have the supervisor just paying the electronic.
Uh, Mr. Leonard is joining us by phone because he is out of town and couldn't get back in time to be here tonight. Next is special use request. The Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at five thirty P. M. in the General District Court Room of the Lee County Courthouse located in Johnsville, Virginia, to solicit input on special use permit request. John Hurst Burger has applied for a special use permit to allow manufacturing of wood trusses in A-one agricultural district. Property consists of approximately four point three two acres of land and located adjacent to fifty-four sixty Flatwoods Road, Route six-six-one, approximately zero point two miles west of Wilson Hill Road, Route eight fifty-five, Dakin Parcel, sixty-seven dash eight dash thirty-two. Anyone here to speak on behalf of that?
Chairman, on behalf of the Planning Commission, and I apologize, I just realized that I did not get the meanings of the Planning Commission meeting on this there. They heard this request last month. There were no objections to this, and they did recommend approval. There are some other similar type businesses in that area, in the agricultural area. Mr. Hurst Burger's home is located on an adjacent track, and some business would be located where he could basically just be right there anyway.
Okay, no further comments on that. I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any more discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next is the proposed amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at five thirty P. M. in the General District Court Room of the Lee County Courthouse located in Johnsville, Virginia. Purpose of public hearing is solicit input, comment on a proposed amendment to the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The Lee County School Board has been allocated additional state funding in the amount of two million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars, which requires a local match of a hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. They have also received a USDA Rural Utilities District Learning and Telemedicine Grant in the amount of seven hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three. They are requesting supplemental appropriations in total amount of three million, five hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars, seventy-four cents to the current fiscal year budget. Anyone here to speak on behalf of that?
Mr. Belfort here, let me just give one out of clarity, in that, to get that total of three point five million, if you do the math, there's a hundred, about a hundred and five thousand dollars that's not detailed there. That's just additional federal funding. There was no max required on that, but it's additional federal funds. But that, the total remains the same.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm here to request the additional funding for the, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. For the proposed supplemental appropriation. We've also, the USDA Distance Service Grant is putting in equipment in each of the schools to help with learning, to help with the interactive learning, and also this additional funding that we receive from the state will go forward a two percent average salary increase.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? If not, I'll close the hearing and...
You have a resolution enclosed in your package, Resolution two-three dash oh fifteen, supplemental appropriations.
Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I guess my question is, what's the board's, what are we looking at using that, if we building on, proving it, what funds are we going to use? Are we going to use some of the CARES Act funds, or is that going to be some of the lottery funds, or?
Does not specifically have to be designated. If it's not designated, you come from one of those, then it could come just from general funds.
Okay.
I'll entertain for a motion, Resolution twenty-three dash zero one five, Lee County School Board Supplemental Appropriation.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is supplemental reports. If not, we move on to constitutional officers, treasurers, or whatever. Any questions or comment on the treasurers? If not, we move on to public expression. Anyone have anything they'd like to address the board? If not, next is approval minutes, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-third.
I'll make a motion, we proved the minutes is stretched.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All vote in favor, signify by saying by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next is refunds request. John Brown, Greg Key.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next is Fayetteville County Administrator report that Fayetteville won't have been issued. Next is approval of dispersment.
Make a motion to table.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is delegations, jury calls.
Thank you. I'd like to talk about the budget, and I know the budget is a very critical thing to deal with, and back in June, we were talking about a deficit, and what I'd like to talk about is this old business, is the compensation for the board appointees, and I appreciate the board giving us a twenty percent decrease on our personal property tax, going down to, yeah, at the two dollars to a dollar ninety. And I know Mr. Cole, he suggested a fifty percent increase on that fifty dollars a month, and I don't think they should get more than ten dollars, which would come out to be twenty percent of what we got as the taxpayer. And I'm not against giving a raise, and that gives sixty dollars a month. And also, that's just what I've got to say, that's just something to think about. I don't think it should be more than that, I think that's a little excessive. Thank you.
Anyone else? We can move on to the finance, quarterly appropriations.
Regarding appropriations, this is in the package, it's being there, so Resolution twenty-three dash oh sixteen, are the quarterly appropriations for Head Start, School System,
I'll entertain a motion to approve. I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is supplemental appropriations and budget transfer.
Here we have one supplemental appropriation, that's the first page there, coming from the general fund for additional salaries in the clerk's office, Circuit Court Clerk's Office revenue is received for that, and also being a budget transfer on the second page from the co-attorney collection program, moving some of that to bonuses for some employees in his office.
I entertain a motion to approve supplemental appropriations and budget transfer. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, the whole business, donated real estate.
I'm still working on one, the one property up in, above St. Charles there, try to nail that down and make sure we get that all covered, but the others, I think we've got covered, they're out again for signature, hope to be getting some of those back any day.
What's the holdup on them, they were out for signature last month?
Pardon?
What's the holdup on them? They've been out for signature for at least one month, I think, two months.
Just the process of getting it run out and getting it back in.
We've mailed it?
Yes.
And they just haven't sent it back?
They've gotten it back yet.
Do we know if they have access to get a note, or can they drive, can we?
I'm not sure. I think, yeah, I think they all can, I don't think there's an issue on that.
My suggestion is that, not while we'll be on board, but we've been rolling this around for a year or more. I've never seen such a hard time as somebody trying to give somebody else property. I mean, if it was me and somebody wanted to give me a piece of property, I'd send a note out there to their house, get them to sign it. I just don't, I don't understand, every time they die, we end up with a new issue, it gets split again into a bunch of areas, and this, I mean, it seems like it's important enough if somebody's willing to give us real estate to send somebody to get the deed taken.
I could follow up with them and see if they need any assistance on that.
But in all fairness too, it's not all local, one's in Maryland, you know what I'm saying? It's not like they're local that we can...
Are all of them away from here?
Only one of them is local.
Well, for whoever it is, I mean, if there's one in Stone Creek, let's go see them. And the others, I mean, maybe we follow up, did they get the mail, do we know what the holdup is?
I'll follow up with them.
Next is Circuit Court Clerk counter redesign.
We've got two, I changed the title on that, but we had plotter and scanner, or not plotter, but scanner and copier maybe, I don't know, but this is actually what we're doing, is redoing the counter area in there. I've got a couple of quotes on that, and I would request closed session for that.
Okay. Next is compensation for board appointees.
Tried to give you a comprehensive list, as I could develop on that, with what the local funding for that is, some of these are paid by another entity, and I was able to get that, but some of them I have no idea.
Mountain Park Community College, do they meet at the college, Justin?
Yes.
Can they do it remote?
I'm assuming they probably have a policy, but I can't say.
That's paid by us or them?
We provide, we provide the funding for that. They stipulate the amount of it.
So we don't have anything to do?
Their bylaws stipulate what their, a mobile service gets.
What would your all thoughts be on moving the airport authority, planning commission, PSA, and the housing authority, and the zoning appeals up to seventy-five to match the rest of the ones that are at seventy-five? I thought Mr. Post said they hadn't had a raise since he got here in ninety-six?
No.
I'll make a motion that we increase the amount for the airport authority, planning commission, public service authority, Lee County redevelopment and housing authority, and board of zoning appeals to seventy-five dollars.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Board appointees, building code, fees. That's interdicted.
I make a motion to table.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all vote in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next is upper, Tennessee River Roundtable, two of those.
Board appointees, the board appointees and alternate.
Right.
Yeah.
I make a motion to reappoint Joe Link Lambert, and Phil Hensley is the alderman.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, it's tourism committee, I make a motion to reappoint Bernadine Huff. She didn't serve a full term, did she?
I don't think so, no.
Not at all, so either.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Southwest Virginia Emergency Medical Services.
I'd like to table that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second to table, all vote in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is social services. There's actually three appointments there.
Two are at Grand Speedway, U V S.
I catch you with these.
I'm just going to make a motion to table.
I have a motion to table, do I hear a second? I'll say, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ninth district development financing incorporated, exactly what is that thing?
It's grant funding for tourism-related projects primarily. Tourism, tourism-related business.
Is that something new? I don't remember that one.
That was one that I asked, that was one that Mr. Johnson held, and I asked that the board would go ahead and take some action, but if you want, if you want to hold out longer than that, that was not crucial.
Billy, have you meetings coming up soon?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is that something Robbie should be on?
Something that, that he could.
That was my thoughts too. You all right with that?
Yeah. I make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I ask if that was something that Robbie, should be on Robbie Wright?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, yeah, okay, yeah, sounds good.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Robbie Wright to that.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next is the Heart of Appalachia. That is also board, Richard Johnson was on.
That is a position, it falls basically to the tourism director, if you have a tourism director in your county. Currently, we do not have anybody in economic development or tourism, so...
Motion to table.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next is airport authority.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to reappoint Scott Taylor.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, the public service authority, I make a motion to reappoint Robert Horton. Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the Virginia Association of Counties Legislative Liaison.
These, from this point down, should be next month.
Okay.
With the exception of, well, down the...
Social services.
Legislative liaison, workforce investment, regional jail, Southwest Health Authority, road viewers, the social services is still active. Road viewers, regional industrial facilities can wait until that date, and Wisco will be next month, an emergency management director, those will be next month.
Okay, I have two, well, I said, you said that's a new business, the social services.
Yeah, if you want to take that, then I don't want to do that.
Okay, next on the agenda is building code two.
No, that was already been taken, the board appointed.
Oh, well, yeah. Backing up, doing the same thing over here, sorry. Next is local law enforcement equipment grant award increase.
They made a board aware of that last month, that that was any increase, but did get a, it was an automatic increase, I don't know how that came about, there's no application submitted, but DCJS did increase that by sixty thousand dollars from four hundred and eighty thousand to a total of five hundred and forty. We are going to be looking at two DCJS on exactly how those funds can be spent, we knew what the original grant guidelines were, but we actually had to submit a list of equipment that was to be purchased, you know, with the application, so this is just additional monies, and we're going to get some guidance on that, but in order to sign the grant acceptance, I would request a motion from the board to accept the additional funds.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the increase of sixty thousand for the local law enforcement equipment grant.
So, please.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the E-nine-one-one generator maintenance proposal.
We have a maintenance agreement on the generator at one time, it expired, and it hadn't, during COVID, and wasn't, wasn't picked back up, it was just a basic service. This one's a little more comprehensive, this is in Cummins, sales and service out of Knoxville, it would provide preventative service and maintenance of the generated unit for a five-year period at a total cost of nineteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Annual payments vary, anywhere from thirty-five, twenty, forty-one, up to forty-one, fifty-three, ninety, based on the services that are provided in each year. This would provide semi-annual inspections and annual servicing of the unit, as well as load testing in years two and four, and they would also service and check the transfer switch and switchgear to ensure that it is set and ready and capable of handling the transfer of power smoothly, back and forth, anytime of general... and forth anytime the generator kicks in. And I'll just put another note in there. Ensuring reliability of this unit to perform properly when needed is vital in order to maintain emergency communications in the event of an emergency or other weather-related power outage. And in addition to providing power to the nine one one dispatch center, it includes all the associated equipment with that. It also provides power to the entire lower level, which basically becomes, say, an emergency command center during an emergency. And it also provides power to the phone system throughout the courthouse. So we can lose power, but we don't lose phone service. So the failure of the unit to power up and operate properly during a power outage is critical to being able to maintain those communications.
Is it a good idea to do this for five years?
I, I think so, because they only do the load testing in, in years two and four. But that ensures that the generator is capable of being able to pick up the full load that it's expected to carry. We had a, we also had an issue. We actually had a, had an alarm going. It runs a test run every sudden for just a short period of time. Like it keeps everything running and making sure it will fire. And it took us about three and a half weeks to get them up here and check that cleared. So had we had an emergency event during that time, we, we would not have a backup generator. So that helps to ensure that that doesn't happen. But we also had an occurrence several years ago. Actually, the whole system was firing probably within the first three years. Where something happened with the feed from the power company. And the generator kicked in. And once it kicked in, when the power came back on, the transfer switch would not kick out and transfer back, power back to the power company. And we had to get, we got a local electrician in, and he was finally able to get on the phone with another company and walk him through how to get the thing disengaged. But it took us a few hours to make that happen. So that's one of the, I think, one of the important features of this is that they also inspect the switchgear and the transfer switch.
Can we build it for cure for this?
Uh, no. We, we had called, this is the company that came and did service on this. There's not that many around. You don't get the local Cummins dealer or the local equipment dealer to come and do this because they don't have generator units at all of them.
You agree we have to unless there's one of those exceptions to it?
I do, yeah. I mean, I, I think it's critical that we get it covered. And it is limited as to, I, I don't know if there's another, another company in the area. There's nobody in the region that I'm aware of.
There's some way you're supposed to state that when you, when you do that. I can't remember what it is. It's limited to.
Yeah, it's not really sole and source, but it's, 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 trying to think of things. It's not feasible, not a feasibility issue, but I forget the exact terminology. And this one is, the service would come out of Knoxville. We were afraid that, the last time we had this, they came out of North Carolina. And even thinking about, you know, power generators, even Carter Machinery, probably you're going to be dealing with cellular office on them. And Knoxville would be closer than that as far as getting a technical here in the event that we had a problem.
So to Mr. Jesse's question, is there a way to show them the period?
Typically, when you take the longer term, you get a better rate. If you go, if you try to go one year at a time, you're probably going to pay a premium on it. And then you're going to have to designate what services you want every year, whether you want full service for all, for the, for the load testing and everything, or you just want basic service on the generator. This is a package deal they put together that they, you know, where they don't do the load testing every year.
Does this seem like a good deal to you?
It's a lot higher than what we had before. But basically before, they just came to check, service the unit, and that was it. And that was about, I'm thinking that was somewhere in the $800 a year range just for that. And that was just once a year. The unit's now sixteen years old.
We had a discussion in the Airport Authority the other day about contracting something for five years. And I said, it just bothers me, I don't mind late votes up to the day we get away out, which is today, I guess, but I don't like the idea of contracting so long it takes the rest of our term and all of the next board's term, and then some of the next. You know what I mean? I don't, if you don't have to contract that long, I don't. It just rubs through the wrong way.
Again, to do a one-year contract, I need to specify exactly what service we want.
Well, I'm not saying we should do a one-year, but I just think if, if it's going to take up four years of their term, I'd rather they vote on it unless there's something, it's emergency, we need to vote on it today.
It's not an emergency unless it doesn't fire the next time it's needed, and then it's critical.
Do you know what their opinion is? Have you talked to them about it?
The Cummins?
The new board?
Oh, no.
What do you all think?
I kind of agree with Dane. The longer you go with the contract, the better deal we're going to get.
I'm not opposed to that, but what if they went with the five-year next month instead of us? That's all I'm saying. I mean, I don't have a strong opinion either way, but.
What do you think? I think, I go with Dane. I think if you get a better deal at five years, their contract.
You vote on it now?
I will if I have to. If you want us to vote. If there's a motion made, I'll vote you.
What do you think, D D? You'll be here next time?
Well, I kind of agree with all the comments that's been made on it. I wish there was some kind of way, like you say, that we could, you know, put it off to next month to give the new board an opportunity to hear their, their opinions on it. But if it's something that we have to do, it's, you know, we have to do it.
Well, it's a lot of fun, friend. I, I make a motion that we table it next month.
I have a motion, do I hear second?
Second.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is Animal Controlled Truck Bid.
This is a, we have a planned replacement. We have a 2013 model. I think that said the other day, it's got a hundred and seventy-seven thousand miles on it, getting pretty worn and starting to cause a little bit of problem. We sent bid specifications to several of the regional dealers. We only got one back, and that was from Morgan McClure Chevrolet in Coeur d'Alene. We did, part of the specifications stated that the sliding animal carrier that's in that, that we currently have was built by the manufacturer for a forward bed. And they made it clear at the time, they need, they had to know what type truck it was going in because the measurements had to be precise. We got the measurements of the overall unit, but we didn't point it out with the truck in order to take that. I don't know what, how complicated that would be for that unit out to make every measurement, but it did include that in the specifications. Again, this is a Chevrolet. Whether or not the forward beds are exactly the same as they were in 2013, I can't say. That's a ten-year period of time, but neither of these are in stock. One is a V eight, one is a four-cylinder turbocharged unit. It's the cheaper of the two at thirty-eight, four fifty. The V eight engine is forty-three thousand, one twenty-five. But if the board wants to move forward with them before we would order, I would recommend that we pull the unit completely out of the truck, measure the wheel well openings, everything, and make sure that it will fit the Chevrolet.
And I'd suggest you go ahead and do that before we vote on it. I make a motion to table it in January.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is Annual Southwest Legislative Reception.
Each year, the Southwest Colfield County is sponsor of the Southwest Virginia Legislative Reception in Richmond. This year's event is scheduled for January thirty-first. That's Scott twenty-three, that should be twenty-four. The invoice enclosed from the Plating District Commission is for a thousand dollars for recount and share of the cost. This is considerably less than it was years ago. Continue to get sponsor donations and others that help contain the cost. This is the same amount that they requested last year for this from all the participating locales.
Do you vote on it?
I haven't made a decision yet. I may go this year, I didn't go last year. We did have someone on team last year.
Be a good experience for them.
P S A usually has someone to do that.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is Social Services Board Member Resignation and Forward Request.
Enclosed a copy of Ellen Chadwell's letter of resignation from the Social Services Board effective December the fourth. There's also a letter enclosed in the packet from the Department of Social Services attorney requesting, making a request on behalf of the D S S Board for action or replacement to fulfill Ms. Chadwell's term. There are currently five citizen members on the D S S Board, one of which is election district. That is not a state code requirement, but it has been custom for many years. Board also voted back in November of 2021 to create a sixth member, or a sixth, or two to Social Services Board. It can be, I think by state code, it can be from three to seven. So it's still within limitations of what's there. You also have a copy, as I said, of the letter from Mr. Dotson, who is the attorney of boards of the D S S Board. And then a list of all of the board appointees to that board and their current term limits.
Make a motion to appoint Joanne Elbridge to replace Ms. Chadwell.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the other appointment is the at-large member, and I make a motion to reappoint Cindy Cobb to that.
Just for the record, I will say. Single my license since I'm on the board.
Okay. I have a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good study.
Next is Public Service Authority Board Member Term Correction.
Part of that's already been taken care of earlier with the appointment of Mr. Horton, but it was brought to my attention recently that the term of Mr. Horton had been recorded for several years with the incorrect expiration date. And I've gone back and researched the minutes of the board for the past twenty-eight years, and also even back further than you in the initial creation documents of the Public Service Authority. That I believe this to be correct. Currently, we had Mr. Horton's appointment listed. It's expiring January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. It should have actually ended, be ended this month. The era began December of two thousand and seven and January two thousand and eight. Prior to that time, that district appointment had always expired in December. But there was an appointment made in December of two thousand and three for that slot with a four-year term to expire in December of oh seven. That appointee resigned in July of oh seven, and another appointment was made to fulfill that term. In December of oh seven, when that formed up on the agenda, that appointment and two others were tabled until January of two thousand and eight, at which time the appointment was filled. But when appointments are tabled, the term doesn't move forward. The expiration date stays the same. It's just, if it takes two or three months to fill that appointment, the new appointment is four years less the three months that's already expired. So that, that was erroneous, and it's remained that way ever since. Now, additionally, in researching this, I discovered that the ordinance that created the P S A stated that all appointment terms should end on December thirty-first. Three of those expire in one year, and two expire two years following. All of them do have a December thirty-one expiration date. So there were two appointments that were made last month, and both of those, I would request at this time, rather than them showing a November thirtieth expiration, that they be extended one month further to December thirty-first of whatever year their term was set to end. I believe that was Harold Gerald and Bill Carter. Both of those should actually be December thirtieth of twenty seventeen rather than November thirtieth. And that will get it back to where it complies with what the ordinance says.
Well, I make a motion that we extend those two terms to December. They'll be what, twenty-seven?
Yes.
I have a motion, do I hear second?
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, Reports and Recommendations of the County Attorney. Reports and recommendations of the County Commissioner.
Just a couple. The Janiforo contract was advertised and was due earlier this month. We only received one with requests regardless, since I've already asked for closed session on the cabin three, to take that up in closed session as well. So we have, and I've placed in front of you, a Z made to me in address to the chairman, Robert Boss, who was serving as county grant writer, stating his wish that the contract be terminated as of December thirty-first of this month. And that was one that was just, just approved for an additional year last month, but that's a his request, so we want to take action on that.
You will make the motion?
I do.
I will.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And one other item, this came in sort of late, but in cause of the nature of it, in the General Assembly meeting next month, beginning next month, Scott County has adopted a resolution in support of funding to restore operation of the natural tunnel State Park Swimming Pool. They've asked the surrounding counties if they would consider adopting a similar ordinance. They shut the pool down during COVID. They shut the pool down during COVID and during an inspection or an analysis of the pool conditions from that date until now, they determined a very large cost. I don't know what the exact amount they came up with, but it's several hundred thousand dollars to make repairs on that. And the pool's been closed ever since COVID restrictions were lifted, it's never reopened. And it is a pretty good drawing point for that park. I know that's not in Lee County, but I do know Lee County residents who went there to use that facility because of the other tanking and other facilities that are available there. So I don't, it's up to the board if you want to take any action on that.
You know, that's one of our, that's one of our really good local facilities. Whole natural tunnel areas. I feel like it's good for the support.
Does that thing be a resolution, don't you think?
Yes, we can, I'll just change it, use some of the wording that deals with, with, okay, but show the DSS Lee County if you want to just use what they got.
That'd be fifteen twenty-three resolution?
Yes.
Or sixteen twenty-three?
Where's the resolution, is it interim?
It's a handout, it's a handout at your station, behind the email from Boss.
There's quite a few papers go over there, Lee County.
The reservation will be twenty-three oh-seven.
Oh-seven. Is that motion done?
Yes.
I have a motion in the second. I have a motion, I need the second.
Second.
Any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
And I do have, aside from the other items I mentioned, do have one item briefly for personnel for closed session.
That it?
That's it.
Reports and recommendations of the board. Smith?
I guess so. I've been here eight years, two terms. It's been good, it's been a good ride. They've done a lot of things accomplished in the county and in my district. Two of the board members I first started serving with is not here. That's Nathan Coe, Treasurer, Charles Slim, he retired. But anyway, I thank the people of District One for giving me two terms, eight years I've been here. And some of the things that I've seen accomplished here in this eight years is the hospital opening. Larry, Dee Dee, Dean, they put in countless hours, working meetings, to see that happen. And that was a good thing. Internet service, Scott County. We worked with those folks because there was areas I know all over the county, maybe not particularly here in Jumbo, but I know cities talk about Blackwater, areas down where I'm from, they forget nothing. So that was really good, and we worked closely with Scott County cable on doing that. AT&T, they put up cell towers where it made better service. Some people could switch over if they liked, had better service than what they had. That was really good. A thing that had been a thorn in our side for a long time, and I'd heard about it for twelve years, was the Shell building that the Constrictors loved. Finally sold that, that was sold and got that away from us, took care of. Roads, especially in my district, I don't know about up here so much, but with the help of the board, Alan Sumcher and Senator Todd Pillion, in District One, we've got a lot of roads fixed that I didn't suspect it would ever be fixed. I mean, they, you know, that just didn't happen. Down at Thomas Walker, of course, Roger, back here will know about that, the basketball court, set beside the pool. The board supervisors supported that, and that is a nice thing. They didn't do it for me, they did it for the kids. I just asked, and the board supervisors supported that, and they did do it for the kids. One of the biggest projects that I did put a lot of time in on, and I'm proud of it, was the Giles Haller water project. It took seven years to get that project through. Of course, COVID slowed that down. But anyway, forty-six homes, forty-six homes in the Giles Haller area received water. They were in different areas there. I know there were six homes that fed off the same spring. So those folks are really appreciative of that. But as I said, it's been a great eight years. I don't know if anybody, I mean, so we sit here, but I'm gonna miss you. Anyway, I wish the two, you board members back here the very best. I really do. I remember the first day that I was sitting right back, well, back there, we were coming on board the next month, we were excited. I was excited to end the family, I mean, you know. So I hope you all come on the same way and get a lot done. I mean, those things I know you want to get done, that'll be a little bit tasky. But anyway, but anyway, that being said, I appreciate all of you all, appreciate Lee County, appreciate the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Comedian, Mr. Cobb.
Well, I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, it's been an honor serving with you and serving with all of you, Mr. Smith, you and both of you, even though you give me a really hard time for four years. But I've enjoyed it, making friends with some of the board members that I didn't know, and I feel like we've got a parallel unaccomplished. And I feel like we've been respectful to one another, we've all gotten along fairly well, been professional. So I want to thank you all for that. And I appreciate the District Two voters for voting in and giving me this opportunity. Heart of Appalachia, if we could revisit that, Mr. Chairman. I think we've got a taker on that board. Mr. Schumaker as well to serve, I believe, on that.
On the Heart of Appalachia board?
I'll be wondering if he's in.
Well, it, and that's fine. But their statute states it's a tourism director. It can have one in camp. Yeah, it's mandated in their code section, it's your, what they call the DMO.
Can he serve until we get one?
He could, yeah. And Spearhead was another appointment that he was on, that some, I mean, I think the board member would be great for Spearhead, if he's interested in that. But yeah, he can serve on him in the interim, he'll be fine, he's going to be a great assistant.
Well, I like that motion that we've formed, Mr. Schumaker, to the Heart of Appalachia.
I have a motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Aye.
Motion in the second. Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I guess the only other thing I've got, going forward, I think the next board should consider the way these board appointments come up, and some of it you can't change. But for example, we're making appointments at the end of our term for people that may or may not be good. And sometimes you end up, you're serving with somebody on board, but you don't have a chance to do anything about it if they're not doing a good job. And so I think that the county going forward needs to look at making some of these four-year appointments into two-year appointments. And there's been people that I've appointed board that never show up, and it kind of embarrasses you that you find out that they're not showing up. And I mean, at that point, you can move them, remove them for good cause, I think, it's a standard. But sometimes they do show up, you just don't think they do a good job. There's not a thing you can do about it because it's a four-year term. So I think going forward, most of those appointments need to be two-year terms.
Some of those are by the bylaws of the organization, some are by, kind of.
Well, I think some are by ordinance, I mean, some of these.
Right, some are by, some are by the bylaws, and some are stating that kind of a four-year term, so.
That's all I've got.
Mr. Jesse.
Guys, I want to say I sincerely appreciate that you'll allow me to be here with you this year. This is my only opportunity to be a Lee County supervisor. Probably never would have ran for the position. And I'm honored to be, have been here with you. We've renewed old friendships, we've made new friendships. I'm forever grateful for the opportunity and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Mr. Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I would like to say thank you to the chairman that has moved the poll for allowing me to join in tonight and being able to get me the agenda through email. And then I would definitely, definitely like to express the fact that it's really, really an honor to get to serve with Robert and Larry and Sidney and David. You know, it's already been spoken, you know, those great friendships involved. And lost a lot of good work, you know, in all these years that we've worked together. And I truly appreciate that. And I wish you guys best of luck as you leave, and hopefully you'll keep supporting us. And hopefully, you know, if we can reach out to you guys to, you know, maybe get involved a little bit and get some opinions throughout, I think, it'd be very valuable because you've been in a lot, a lot of years and have a lot of great decisions, I think, so far. And then, second, you know, I guess, I want to go into business after that. I just can't, like I say, I can't say enough about how much I've enjoyed working with you guys and being friends with all of you all. But on the, on the business side of things, I'd like to make a motion to close the courthouse on December the twenty-sixth so all of our, all of our people can spend an extra day since, you know, but it's such a hectic time to come back on a Tuesday. And I'd like to make, put that in the form of a motion to close the courthouse down on December twenty-sixth.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. I have a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
In my next, I got, I got three things here, actually. Well, actually, just one more thing. I'd like to ask the board members their thoughts about utilizing banking and our works program to help out with our litter control. Since we got an employee that's, that's been off due to sickness and over there, Allen Control. Just to get your own thoughts on that, because, you know, just talking with Allen, you know, in the last couple of weeks, he and I have talked some and, and I know I've been critical of our litter control. I didn't think we were getting enough, but then again, I didn't have, I didn't put enough thought into the process to know that we were short in personnel there for several months. But I know just what I've been saying in the last, the last couple of weeks or so that I've been, you know, kind of getting, standing to us about that there has been some stuff that's been done and has been a huge positive to the county. And I have to give credit with the works program for working with us on that. But like I say, I just think it's something that, that he didn't mention it, it was something that I mentioned. I thought, you know, I don't know if we actually have in the program right now. Maybe we have too many, but that it won't work. But I thought if we did, rather than trying to reach out there and try to hire somebody, because we don't know if our employees will make it back, you know, when they'll make it back. But hopefully he does. But just something to help out because our litter, it just, it's getting completely out of control. So what do you guys think about that?
I don't have a problem with it. Dee Dee? I don't know. How much time are you talking about making happen with?
Well, I didn't have no, sorry, specific amount of time. I just thought maybe that there might be some time. I don't know that, I don't know how much time she's actually, you know, free time she's got with, can I get this? Would have to depend on being to kind of look in, see how many employees we've got, or how many people we got in that program. And then talk with Roscoe and make sure that everything, you know, that he can handle if she went to him. Maybe, maybe if it's just a day a week or something like that, maybe to give them, get them guys a break over there, because I'm sure they're, they're going at it pretty hard just to them over there.
Yeah. I'm not sure that they're utilized very much, but we bought them laptops for the reason that we want them to be able to work while they were sitting out in the van and people were picking up trash. So, I mean, a lot of these folks, Allen gives them a warning letter. So that's something, while you're sitting there in the van waiting on them to pick up trash, you could draft the letter, save it on your laptop, and you get back to the office ready. But I think there's a lot of things that they could do for Allen. But I think it ought to be at his discretion, he needs to say, this is what I need you to do.
I agree.
Well, Mr. Poe, check this out. I guess you guys can make that decision next month. Right?
Yeah, that's right. And again, I just want to express one last thing, what I can say. I want to express just how much I appreciate you current board members, working with you guys. I look forward to working with the new board. But it has been truly a pleasure, you know, to be with you guys for the last four years and so much for eight.
Thank you, Dee Dee.
I appreciate that.
Well, tonight makes my one hundred and ninety-second consecutive board meeting. I haven't missed one in sixteen years. And I would like to thank the people of District Three for supporting me for sixteen years. And it has been a pleasure serving with this current board. I don't care what board you're on, you're not going to agree all the time on everything. But when you leave here, you shake hands and you're still friends. And that's the way it's got to work. You don't take it personal because somebody don't agree or see things the same way you do. Life goes on. And I feel very privileged and grateful to have been here for sixteen years. It's been good, but I'm ready to retire. Again, I'd just like to thank my fellow board members for serving and being here with us. And Miss Muncie, you too. I appreciate being here with you, Angela. And Mr. Poe's been outstanding. Couldn't ask for anybody better to work with for sixteen years. He's a good man, he's going to be missed when he retires. I'd just like to wish everybody a merry and blessed Christmas and a happy new year. And that's it. Goodbye, Chip.
I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to two point two, dash thirty-seven eleven. So they won personnel, seven or twenty-nine contracts, is that it then?
Uh, yes.
I have a motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?